Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, April 23, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We have Commissioner Eric Gunther attending by computer and our city council liaison, Trish Hanks, attending by phone. I do appreciate everybody being able to attend tonight. Thank you very much. And thanks for all the preparation work ahead of time to city staff. Okay, we will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on such subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and the commission's vice chair, Richard Sassen, will be the timekeeper. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? And we'll get into the specific public hearing items in just a second. Okay, we will now receive comments, both oral and written, from the public regarding a zone reclassification change to assign single family residential as a zoning district for .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way, and the request to vacate the right-of-way is in process, and to allow a specific use permit for NAICCS code 8131 religious organizations as an overlay on the following properties. The .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way to be zoned single-family residential, 2.983 acres located at 111 East Heritage Drive that is zoned downtown district, 1.0528 acres located at 209 South Friendswood Drive that is zoned downtown district, .4223 acres located at 201 East Heritage Drive that is zoned multifamily residential low-density, .8151 acres located at 204 and 206 East Heritage Drive, and .8913 acres located at 208 East Heritage Drive that are zoned single-family residential. And to replace the existing specific use permit for the Family Life Center which is located on 2.98 acres at 202 East Heritage Drive that is zoned single-family residential, specific use permit 2001-09. Aubrey, would you please provide staff summary?
Yes, sir. So First Baptist Church of Friendswood has recently acquired some additional properties and so they're in the process. This is part of making a long-term, a long-range plan for them to improve their properties, rebuild part of their sanctuary, just make improvements to their properties overall. The current proposal should last them for 20 years, so their proposed phasing was in your backup material. So the first improvement would be the property at 209 South Friendswood Drive to improve that parking and that building. It used to be the old King's Kids daycare. They are going to incorporate the downtown district aesthetic requirements as far as the brick-paved sidewalks, the benches, and the lights. The next phase would be a new welcome center addition and south church expansion, and that's on the, their main, the main sanctuary property is 111 East Heritage Drive. Phase two would be administration building renovation and expansion, and that's at 209 South Friendswood Drive. Phase three would be a new storage building and parking lot at 201 East Heritage. And then phase four is a church, the north expansion, interior renovation, and adjacent site improvements. And then phase five would be removal of a portion of a building and complete an education building expansion on the main property at 111. And phase six is the Family Life Center addition and adjacent parking. A couple of items to note, this is a specific use permit. All the properties that they own have varying zoning districts, so, but the SUP allows, with the SUP, a religious organization is allowed in all those zoning districts. So that's the reason that all the underlying zoning districts will remain. This, the SUP, will be an overlay on top of all those districts. So during the review of the site plan and the landscape plan, we made some considerations for the landscaping. The Family Life Center property is zoned single-family residential, which typically only allows or requires one tree per lot. Whereas the 111 East Heritage is zoned downtown and requires a tree every 25 feet around the perimeter of the property. There's a lot of existing trees, significant trees of size that we would rather them keep. And so we gave them some credit on the other tracks to achieve the overall landscaping requirements. So that will allow them to keep their existing landscaping, yet add to, I mean, they'll add to it and achieve the overall look. The, the building height, the main sanctuary is at the 111 East Heritage. The building height of the main building is going to be 44 feet 8 inches with an ornamental tower that's going to have a height of 72 feet 8 inches. On top of that, there's an ornamental cross proposed that's going to be 90 feet 10 inches. The downtown district allows a 70-foot building height. There is, our zoning ordinance includes an exception for architectural elements such as church spires, ornamental towers, communication towers, smokestacks, stage towers, scenery lofts, there's a whole list of items. The ordinance require, or states that the total combined maximum height for these items and the structure that they're attached to is 50 feet overall height, measured from the first floor to the highest point unless otherwise approved by the commission. It's my thought that this exception was not amended when the downtown district zoning was added in 2007. So it didn't really take into account the 70 feet that's allowed in the downtown district since it has that 50-foot max. So, but we're covered that the commission can prove, approve different heights. In the backup material, I did provide some locations and just structures that I was aware of that had, you know, that were tall buildings. It's Friendswood, so the four-story on Friendswood Drive is, you know, kind of a big deal for us. So there was some references in there and just to give you a visual to be able to see what other structures were and what 80 or 90 feet or 80 feet might look like. And I think that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much, Aubrey.
You're welcome.
Is the applicant present and would they like to make any comments?
We are present.
If you could step to, if you could step to the podium, please, and provide, tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kopp. I'm with Legler Cooper Architects and I'm here with two representatives from the church, Lee Harris and Omar Peck. And we, we've been very eager to be able to unite the campus under this SUP with the inclusion of the additional property that they've acquired. And so we're eager to proceed and try to continue the character that y'all already established here in Friendswood and carry that through the whole campus. In regards to the two variances that Aubrey mentioned, the landscaping requirements, we have two very, very nice corners that have significant trees, very old trees, that we really like to preserve and keep a park-like setting in those areas, and so that's why we're trying to keep those and then keep a balance for some of the additions that we're making on the church property. And as for the church tower, it's a little bit, the tower is actually set off one block away from 518. And so the church is very interested in being able to portray a presence along the main street. So, those are two comments for that.
Great.
Do you all have any questions?
I think we'll have a discussion period in the next section of the meeting and I think we'll be able to ask you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Okay, seeing none. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission March 26, 2020, regular meeting minutes? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Eric, how do you vote? Are you there? Eric?
Choiced to be unanimous, we're waiting on Eric.
There he is.
Eric, we need your vote. Can you hear us?
No, I think you can hear us.
Can you hear us?
Bear with us while we have these technical difficulties. While you're, we're waiting, we really debated on how to have this meeting, but we really felt like we really wanted to hear and be as face-to-face as we can be to make sure that we got everybody's opinion heard. We want to make sure of that. Can we abstain?
I guess. I don't know. Can you hear us, Eric? Hello? My microphone is green.
Yeah, let's call him. Let's call him and see.
Well, it's not sharing my...
He doesn't have his speaker on.
Trish, don't forget, Trish is still there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, don't hang up on Trish.
The man behind the curtain.
Do you need another phone? Um, maybe I can put him...
Want to urge him?
I could, but he has to be visible for the meeting.
Call him, do the phone.
Okay. All right.
It may be six to one. Yeah.
Oh, did? Okay, go ahead. We're just, his camera's blank now, so...
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and move on and see if you can, if you can get him back.
Okay.
Okay. Hold on. Next, well, next, I'm coming right back to you, Aubrey.
Record that vote. And is that an issue later?
I just want to mark him as present and not voting.
Okay.
Okay, Aubrey, our next are the discussion items.
Okay.
Which is right back to you.
Okay. So, um, did you read that agenda item?
Oh, I can. Okay, next are our discussion items, specifically a staff update regarding changes to Local Government Code, Chapter 212, with a focus on House Bill 3167, which affects approvals and disapprovals of plans and plats. Aubrey?
So, I wanted to give y'all an update. There was another state law change that kind of caught us a little bit by surprise. So this effect, it went into effect September 1st of last year, and it's regarding the approval process of plats and plans as they're defined by the Local Government Code. So, House Bill 3167 changed the approvals that the commission can give, and they are to approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove a plat. So, to approve a plat, they added some standards of approval. I put those in your compliance memo for the plat that's on the agenda tonight. So they established some standards for approval, which weren't in the Local Government Code before. There was just always, I think there may have been a statement or that you, if it met the code, you had to approve it, which is still somewhat the case, but they added some other criteria in there. To approve conditionally, staff has to call out specific code requirements of why we're approving conditionally. If we disapprove a plat, we have to have reasons, and those code references have to be included in our reason for disapproval as well. Those two processes are similar in nature in that if they're disapproved, approved conditionally with conditions, or disapproved with reasons, the applicant can address those comments and come back to the commission. There's no, you can't put a deadline on the applicant and when to bring that back to the commission. But once that is resubmitted to the commission, we have 15 days to reconsider the items. It's basically kind of a loop. Once, you know, if we disapprove it again for those same reasons, you know, if we still don't feel that those have been met, the applicant has another chance to address those comments, resubmit, we have 15 days. So it's kind of a loop system there. Once, some of the other things, there used to be, you know, once a complete application is filed, there was some ambiguity in there that we didn't really apply the 30-day timeframe to preliminary plats because they weren't in recordable form. A lot of those gray areas were removed from the ordinance or from state law. So, once a file, a plat is filed, within 30 days, it has to be on a commission agenda so we can approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove. The applicant can request a waiver to those 30, to that 30-day requirement. We can't require that, but they can request it, and their request would come to the commission instead for consideration. I think that's the gist of it. It was in your backup material, if y'all have any questions?
I guess one of the key parts is if we fail to act within the required time, it's deemed to be approved.
Yes, yes. And that was in state law before, that we had to take action within 30 days, but like I said, we, there was always a gray area there. We didn't apply it to preliminary plats, but we did to final plats. And we would give the applicant the option to withdraw if they didn't, you know, if they still had items that were outstanding. The other part of that is the compliance memos that we used to give you that had a few outstanding items. Staff would just check to make sure that those were made and not bring it back to you. But now, if we have conditions or reasons on there, it's got to come back to you all for reconsideration. We can't, it's not just staff approval.
But there's only three categories. We can either approve it just the way it is, we can approve it with conditions that they have to take care of, or we deny it with deficiencies. So, I mean, I could see a case where you could, you'd want to, some things are going to lend themselves to resubmitting completely, so there's no mixture, it's only those three categories and that's it.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, if there's like a misspelled word or something, I mean, we'll just take that as approval and not bring, I mean, that's not necessary to bring it back to you all. But if there, like I said, if there are specific code referenced items, and that's basically, I guess the state's just trying to get cities to quit, to not hold up developments, to be clear about their, you know, requirements and their actions, and so they're very, they have to be specific. You can't just be arbitrary, you know, arbitrarily denying plats, which we don't do, but I'm sure there's cities out there that do apparently.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, three-year, three-and-a-half years I've been there, we've never not approved a plat because you, the staff would not bring a plat to us, that wouldn't comply anyway, correct?
Right, yeah.
Yes, that won't change.
No, what, so, well, it's going to change a little bit.
Would it change? Maybe today.
Yeah, because a preliminary plat that didn't, that we didn't fill, meet the requirements, we wouldn't bring to you until it met the requirements.
Right.
But now, even with a preliminary plat, we're tied to that 30 days.
Okay.
So...
And Aubrey, on the recycle, is it 15 days or 30 days?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So we really can't miss a meeting or abandon a meeting because this could require us, because otherwise we will miss the 15 days by having bimonthly meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Which, I mean, we meet twice a month, so...
We do anyway, but, yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue.
But sometimes we have minor things and say, let's just not, we only have one thing, let's cancel this meeting. We're not going to do that anymore.
But it's clear that the compliance with conditions has to come back to a forum? It's clear about that?
Yes, yes, sir.
That can't be a process outside of this?
No. So I think the state may have been trying to make some processes easier for developers, but making those, I mean, just approving with conditions and requiring that to come back to the commission, that's delaying and adding more time, you know?
It sounds much more formal than it previously was done, which maybe in some areas of the state needed, but we're caught in that same net.
Yeah.
Yeah, this seems like it slows the process down than speeding it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't get this law, but...
The other process gap that I can't piece together here is, say we find ourselves in a public forum where we do decide to disapprove it, I hear you, right, they do a really good job before scrubbing it before it gets to us. Do we have to have that rationale and justification prior to disapproval, or do, so how would we disapprove one at a meeting without the proper...
So, if you found a reason that we didn't include on the compliance memo, we would just need that reference to that code and we could add it to the list.
Okay. That's a challenge.
Any other questions about that? Anything else on that, Aubrey?
I don't think so. Did I miss anything, Mary Kay?
That's a good summary.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, what is the difference between a preliminary plat and a final plat?
Just trying to clarify the difference between a preliminary and a final plat, then if we're going to treat them the same way for approval's sake.
Yeah, typically, a preliminary, a preliminary plat technically requires contour drawings. It's typically a preliminary plan to make sure that water's going to work, to make sure that your sewer plan's going to work, to make, it's conceptual. Typically, we don't have signature blocks on it. The contours are included to show low-lying areas, ditches, you know, that kind of thing, and it's preliminary in nature. The final plat, you remove the contours, you add the signature blocks, you finalize, you know, any easements from utility companies and things like that that are in line with your construction plans. So after you get preliminary plat approval, we require another set of construction plans to, they're very detailed where you're going to put your water, sewer, drainage, streets. And so you're, you use the construction plans to determine your final information for the prelim, or for the final plat.
Okay.
Okay, we will now move on to the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 219-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding a zone classification change to assign single-family residential as a zoning district for .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way, the same one we mentioned earlier, that the request is in the process, and to allow a specific use permit for NAICS use 8131 religious organizations as an overlay on the following properties. The .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way to be zoned single-family residential, 2.983 acres located at 111 East Heritage Drive that is zoned downtown district, 1.0528 acres located at 209 South Friendswood Drive that is zoned downtown district, .4223 acres located at 201 East Heritage Drive that is zoned multifamily residential low-density, .8151 acres located at 204 and 206 East Heritage Drive, and .8913 acres located at 208 East Heritage Drive that are zoned single-family residential. And to replace the existing specific use permit for the Family Life Center which is located on 2.98 acres at 202 East Heritage Drive that is zoned single-family residential, specific use permit 2001-09. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Is there a second? Aubrey, is there anything additional that you would like to add, that to present?
I don't think so.
Okay. And just asking the applicant, is there anything else that you would like to present at this time? Discussion, I'll start with you, Mr. Sassen.
Okay, Aubrey, I, I know you've explained it to me in an email and you explained it to me just now, but I still don't get it. Tell me what we're not doing on the trees that is not officially correct. I mean, I appreciate keeping the old trees. So if I, let me paraphrase what I think I heard, is that the fam, the main sanctuary tract, 111 East Heritage, will not have the downtown district perimeter of trees, but it does on that tract have some old legacy trees, and so we're kind of counting those instead. Is that fair or am I misunderstanding?
It will have some perimeter tree. They're putting some new perimeter trees over there. And actually, they're adding mainly to the East Heritage side, they're adding new trees, but the existing trees were at the, on the Shadow Bend side, the big, the big trees that are existing.
Right.
So they're adding trees and they're going to have, they're adding the six-foot sidewalk all the way around the perimeter of that property.
Right.
And it's a tree every 25 feet is what's required. So they're accounting for the number, but we're just not putting all of them on that track. Some of them are on the adjacent.
Okay, and so are they removing trees also, or are they just adding trees and just not adding enough trees? One tree has to go?
On the multifamily lot.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't sound like a big deal, and it sounds like a rational solution to the problem.
And there, that whole, that whole cluster of trees back behind the Family Life Center, I mean, we didn't count those trees, but there's a lot of existing trees back there.
Right, that's a wooded, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, understood, okay. And then on the 90-foot 10-inch exemption, I have, I have a problem with that. I happen to think we, right now, we allow 70-foot, we have a very strangely worded ordinance that allows things to go on top of a 70-foot that can not be higher than 50 feet, so we need to straighten that out. But the way I read it right now, the ordinance says that you shall not build above 70 feet in the downtown district, which is higher than any other part of the city, and so, and right now, the tallest church that we've allowed in Friendswood is 606 Cedar, Cedarwood, which is 57 feet. And so they would be allowed to go to 70 feet here, 13 feet higher than any other church in the area. I have a real problem with going up to 90 feet and making a new standard for this. And so I intend, if, if, by voting yes, if I understand it correctly, Mary Kay, that that would allow them to do that. And so the only way to prevent that or to discourage that is, is to vote no on this, is that correct?
Yes, I think you would have to amend it.
Okay.
Amend it to the height that you would accept.
Got it, okay. And as I understand it too, this is a recommendation to city council, so city council will have the final word. So what I'd like to say to, Trish, you're, you're on the line, right?
Yes, I...
Okay, I would like to speak kinda directly to you and to any city council members that are watching on the recording here, that if they consider this and look at this and decide that they wanna make an exemption, 'cause I suspect there will be a lot of political pressure put, because there's a lot of people that are associated with this project, to make an exemption here, that they, instead of making an exemption for one church versus another church, that they instead propose that we change the ordinance to allow steeples to go to 200 feet or whatever we think is appropriate. I happen to think 70 feet is sufficient, but if they decide to change it, I would strongly encourage you, Trish, and the other city council members to say, we need to change the law and not just say, we'll make a special exemption for this particular applicant. And that's, that's my view on this matter.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Trish, and, and that's the only thing I have to say, thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
So where I was looking was the, the property that directly faces the downtown district, that used to be the King's Kids. And I, I don't have it to pull up right in front of me, but could I hear more about what the plan is for that particular piece of property? Because I, I have, for a long time, considered that an, an eyesore on the downtown district and I am very interested to see how it's going to be changed.
Can you step to the podium again?
In, in general, I really like the idea of a planned community around the, the church. It sounds like a, a, a very nice 20-year plan. But in particular, what faces the downtown district is where I have a concern.
Okay. So what we're planning to do is do a, create that building as the, the main administration building for the church. So that would be their front door for visitors to come in. Not only is it going to be housing their offices, but it's also gonna be housing a community center, just a, a large open air area for church events and maybe even public events that they can run out to.
So the plan is to tear down what's currently there or reface it?
It's to, it's to renovate the interior and also reskin that building with the materials that we'd be using for the rest of the campus, some of it already there. So you see a lot of stucco and you also see stone in there as well. And that's a new material that we're going to be integrating with the new, the church facade.
And is this one of the areas that will not have the perimeter of trees?
This one will have the tree. And then it also includes a small addition to the side of that building just to accommodate the number of offices they need in that area. But the church isn't happy with the, the current view of that building. They, they're interested in, in getting that refaced as soon as possible. It's, it's not in the most immediate phase. Right now, we're focused on improving the parking area in that area, but as soon as the church is able, once we've get, get the welcome center finished, that's one of the next agenda items.
Okay. And I, I agree with you about exceptions. I don't like to particularly put an exception out there.
Any, any other questions?
No, I would like to listen to what others have, let me come back.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, and, and looking at this, I mean, I understand we have to vote on this as a whole and, and I'll just be transparent, say, I, I really have no issues with everything on here with the, with the exception of the 209 Friendswood Drive. I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that the church has been here for the length of time it has and what they do for the community and, and certainly happy for the expansion. Where I do get concerned though is that it's labeled as mixed use. I think that's the highest and best use for the property, so that's the, that's the path I'm going to support. So I, I guess I'll, I'll echo your, your thoughts earlier that as a result of that concern, I, I have to vote down on this solely for that sole purpose. The rest of it, I, I think I can, I can be okay with.
Anything else, any? No, thanks. Mr. Banfield?
The, the corner piece on Shadow Bend and Friendswood Drive, is that Phase Two? Is that here, y'all right, that's gonna be the, the second phase of the development?
If, if you could stand to the mic, 'cause then, then people watching the video would...
If you could explain the phases again, is it going over, 20-year period, you gonna be doing all this development?
It's a 20-plus year plan.
Okay.
We don't have a real set time, you know, schedule on this. But as funds became available, as needs need to be met, that's the order of what we expect the sequence to be. And so for, we have the first phase set as a Phase 1A and a Phase 1B. Phase 1A includes the 209 parking area. Phase 1B includes the expansion of the church and the welcome center. Phase 2 is the, the renovation and the refacing of the 209 property.
And no idea when that Phase 2 will come about?
Not yet, but they're very eager to pursue it.
Okay.
Right now, they're in, in a, a financial campaign right now for the, for the welcome center portion.
Well, I think the overall plan looks great, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a, bringing the church and the, and the campus kinda into modern periods, I think it's gonna be a major improvement, it's gonna look really good. And the, the steeple, the 90-foot, that doesn't really bother me, 'cause it's just, it's just, if the building's gonna be 90 feet, the tower building be 90 feet, that would bother me. But just having the, the tower and the ornamental cross on top hitting 90 feet, that doesn't cause me any heartburn. The corner piece on Shadow Bend and Friendswood Drive, that gives me a little heartburn. That's, that's not the highest and best use for downtown, but the overall development is, is good. So I'm gonna reluctantly support this, but the piece on the corner does give me heartburn, but I am gonna support it. That's all I got.
Mr. Clark?
I don't really have anything to add, I, I had all those concerns as well. I'm kind of a, in, in agreement with the comments of it and brought up. I'm not too concerned about the 90 feet, having that particular property on the main street of the city with that use is maybe not the best use. So, but that's, you know, that's my opinion, but, but I think I, I will reluctantly sort of support this.
Is Eric with us?
No, he decided to, I think he lost audio, so he's not coming back.
Okay, okay. No, is that, hang, hang on one second? Thank you. So I, I guess I have a couple other questions to add to some of this. Obviously, the height of the building is causing some concern because of the existing regulations. Why was it designed for the height it is, knowing that, I mean, you, everyone obviously knew, involved with the project, knew what the existing height requirements were? Why, why was it designed this way?
Well, we started taking a look at trying to reface the, the current church building and we're not trying to change a whole lot to the structure right now. We're, we're trying to keep it as easy to extend for the church as possible. But there's also an issue of being able to create some kind of a presence. That church is set back one block away from the main street and there's a number of buildings that interfere with the visual to that building. It's, so what we're trying to do is, is try, try to be able to show where that church is. So...
Okay, I, I just was wondering if there was some, some reason...
Well, I didn't, well, we definitely...
Visibility, visibility from Main Street was, was your reason, is what I'm gathering.
Yes, it is. The church really felt that a tower element was important for the identity of the church, to be able to point people in that direction. As far as the, the height in proportion to the main elevation, that felt appropriate, architecturally speaking, because we did need to have a certain size of a base of a tower and for the type of character that we were trying to present, that evolved into that, that height. Now, there's, there can be a little bit of adjustment to it, a little, to keep that same proportion, but we're trying to maintain that as much as possible.
Yeah, it does increase the height, I mean, it, it's over, the tower and the cross add that's on top of it doubles, overdoubles the height of the, the building, at least in the data we were given. So it's a significant rise in elevation, okay. Why is, why is, you're here with, to do an SUP and maybe this might be an Aubrey, so I'll kinda go between the two of you, but, but why is an SUP required in this particular case for you to develop the property that, the way that you want to do it? Why, why are you here before us with an SUP?
So it's required per the zoning ordinance. There, so the Family Life Center has an SUP existing on that property and the church has been existing on the 111 East Heritage. I suspect that when this property was zoned Office Park District, the church use may have been a la, an allowed use at that time or whatever zoning was on this property when the church was started, it was an allowed use. But over time, our permitted use table gets changed and so in order to come into compliance with the current requirements, we have to make everything correct. And so, like I said, the religious organization's use requires an SUP in all of the various zoning districts to allow the use. So they're wanting to get a permit to start their parking, but we had to get their, we had to vacate the right-of-way, we have to do the SUPs and all, to get the zoning right. They're in the process of plating, you'll see that on a next agenda. We've got a lot of pieces and parts going on. They are also, during our site plan review process, we realized that all the parking for 111 East Heritage Drive is located in the right-of-way. If you, you'll see on your site plan, the dark line is their property line and all the parking spaces are in the city right-of-way. So they have submitted a license agreement to work with the city on that, so we'll allow those parking places to remain, they will count as the required parking for the church. But it'll go into a license agreement with the city to, for those spaces to remain. Part of that agreement was that they are gonna be designated as public parking spaces in accordance with the downtown district zoning regulations for shared parking. So it's 69 parking spaces, that will be on city council's agenda for May 4th.
I see, that'd be very nice, have those parking spaces. Okay, but, but stay up there for just, I'm, I'll come back, I'm gonna come back to you. But I mean, Aubrey, are we gonna see the site plan where we, we will go through the facade materials and all that? Are we gonna see that at a later meeting?
No, everything was included in this, so this is their, this is the plan.
So all building materials are gonna be in, in conceptual drawings or as-is, we won't see it again?
Right.
I did look at it all, but I had assumed it would come back, okay. Okay. And, and since it wasn't in the materials, I assume all the materials of construction meet all of our current requirements?
Yeah, since the house bill changes, we don't have a lot of discretion in that, but they have the earth tone colors, we can't enforce the penetration requirements anymore. So other than that, I mean, the building heights, the materials, I mean, they're all, you know, cohesive and as far as their campus blend together, so...
Okay, so let me ask a couple of questions about the storage building, thank you, Aubrey.
You're welcome.
Does the use of the, well, maybe it's come back to you now that I look at my question. Does the use of the storage building get allowed under the SUP directly? Is use, use of that building is, is storage? I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, is it the permitted use as storage or is it get covered under the religious organizations? And so whatever, however the religious organization uses it, that's up to them?
Right.
Once it's, once, under the SUP as a religious organization, okay?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I'm a little concerned that the storage building is, it's right now an existing house, a single-family dwelling, but on at least two sides, there are homes, single-family homes. Now, I know it's, how it's zoned as multifamily residential, but I guess I'm, I'm curious as to how are you gonna make sure as a storage facility that you're gonna make sure that you're not interfering with any of those neighbors? What, I mean, as far as fencing, lighting, those kind of things, what are, what are you doing to make sure that you don't interfere with them?
We do have a, a fence that is surrounding the, the neighbors in the back and along the side to create a, a barrier between the parking areas and the neighbors. And as far as the lighting, we put, we also submitted a photometric plan to, to show what our lighting levels might be. We're trying to, trying to contain that as much as possible just for the parking areas and, and trying to shield the rest of the neighbors as much as possible.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's actually my last question for you, so thank you very much. Aubrey, I did have one more. Oh, oh, okay. Make sure I get the right one. So it's, it's zoned multifamily residential low right now. So the things like setbacks, do those still apply? And the building heights, all those, all those things still apply because of the underlying zoning?
Yes, and we reviewed it, so for the, for that lot, we reviewed it per that zoning district. For the Family Life Center, we reviewed it with the single-family setbacks. And so for the two downtown pieces, we reviewed it with those. They still have to meet all the underlying requirements. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to double-check that.
Good question.
Brett?
This might be an Aubrey question too, and, and maybe a church question. It just, it just hit me, you know, we're making a decision, this is a 20-year plan, so we're making a decision that's gonna be in place for 20 years, is that correct? I mean, 10 years from now, we could have different types of requirements in the downtown area or that the house bill hopefully get repealed where we have more control. But I guess, once we approve, or I guess when council approves, they're set for 20 years. They, there's nothing we can change, even though our downtown districts might change or something. I guess it'd be grandfather forever, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, if, I mean, I think if trends change or, you know, if the, I mean, if their plans change and they choose to go in a different direction, it would have to come back through this process.
Okay.
Again, to change anything other than what we're approving.
Man, I like the concept, it's, I think it'd be beautiful enhancement, just, we're making a 20-year decision here, that kinda, kinda thought about that. The other question in, in, is it my understanding the church owns the other corner, Heritage and Friendswood Drive where the Dunn's brother is? Is that in fact, and you don't have to share this if you don't want to, is that factoring these plans at all? So that's gonna remain Dunn Brothers for the people feature? Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
We don't have any plans to make any changes to that property at this time.
Okay. All right, that's all I got.
I, I had one more comment just to make, just to make, you know, when I vote, we'll go from there and see what happens. But I'm following up a little bit with Mr. Sasson's comments. I am very concerned about setting a new precedent about height. The rules are the rules and have been the rules for a little while and is a maximum height of 70 feet. And I have to make sure that we're willing to do this for you, we have to be willing to do it then for anybody el, anybody else's building. Their facade could go up that height, up to 90 feet. So I'm very concerned about setting a precedent, that we're gonna make sure that we treat everybody equally. And so if we're willing to do it for you because we think it's a, it's a great design and, and we'd like, like you as an organization, we have to be able to treat everybody at the commission that comes before us the same. So I'm a little bit concerned about setting a new precedent that would apply to beyond churches possibly. So that, that's my concern, I think the 70-foot height is, is pretty tall and it's significantly adding to your overall building height and I think that's tall enough that can be well seen from, from Main Street. seen from, from Main Street. That, that's where I'm at right now on this, so just wanted to make sure you understood where I was coming from on it, uh, on that. Okay. Do we need, we have a motion to approve, um, I, 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 I sense we have a mixed and we could end up with only six people, we could end up, see, we'll see where this goes, but we'll, we can go for, I think, a, a motion to approve and see how that goes and then we could revise the motion i, if necessary from there. I'm looking, Mary Kay, I'm staring intently at you. Guide me in this one, please.
Yes, the motion is to approve what has been submitted as a, uh, 90-foot, whatever inch height, um, and all the other, uh...
The things that go...
All the SUP properties, et cetera.
Staff comments. Mr. Perry?
So, at the bottom of the ordinance for the SUP, it said something in there about conditions or something down at the bottom. Is that the area where we need to, to talk? It was in the blue box that you gave us, I think it was the last thing.
On the, on the rezoning report, or...
In the report, you gave us a blue box with the SUP ordinance?
Uh-huh, yes.
The last thing there. Uh, what, what you're talking about, it's something, maybe I'm off, but something, something in there gives us that flexibility.
Yes, so if you, if, if, um, if you want to amend the motion to rec, to approve a different height, you could, any, well, Richard made the motion, so the amend, to approve a different height other than 90 feet 10 inches, it's gonna require an amendment to the motion. Um, in addition to that, if there's any other, um, items that you think need to be added as far as screening or landscaping or anything like that, you can add that.
What that section's for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. I thought it was, I'm sorry. Okay, the motion and the second that are before us right now are to amend it with staff comments, but amend it as is with staff comments. So we'll need to take a vote on that first. All those in favor of approving that as the motion, as it stands? The motion does not, all, all those opposed? Okay, so it does not pass. Is there another motion that you would like to make?
Or anyone would like to make.
Anyone like to make, that's fair, fair enough, fair enough.
I feel like I'm being stared at.
No, no, fair enough.
Just for clar, is the concern here, is just the 90-foot, is that what's holding everything up?
Yes. That's my concern, yes.
Yes. So what I think you're suggesting is, and Mary Kay, correct me here, if I'm, I'm in dangerous territory when I, I get spontaneous, um, the motion would be to approve, subject to a limitation of overall height of 70 feet, and, and that's a valid motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I so move, so I don't have to say it again, so I mess it up the second time.
I'll second that.
Good, keeps my notes straight, thank you. Okay, so we now have before us to, uh, a motion to approve and a, and a second based on a overall building height limited to 70 feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Were there any other major concerns with this that would prevent people from voting for it? I know there were, talked about different areas or, or such like that, um, are there any other amendments that some of the city, other council members want, like...
I, uh, I kinda changed my, uh, my, uh, opinion in there. I think, um, of greater concern to me than the height is the fact that, uh, the tract along 518, I'm sorry, 209.
Correct.
Um, we have a potential decision that can leave that property unchanged for 20 years if they don't go past the first part of this plan, so I'm, I'm not real happy with thinking about that particular property being there like that. So I'd like to see a better plan that, that assures early development and, uh, improvement of that property.
And listen, I'll just respond to that. I understand your viewpoint and, and I share your concern as well, but I also look at, there's many properties along 518 and other places that, I mean, it's, it's the property owner's right to, to leave, as long as they meet the rules and regulations to leave that property, as, as much as I'd like for it to change, believe me, um, for the, I think the betterment of Friendswood. But I share your concern, but I also don't want to stand in the way of progress of the, all the other very, very nice things that they're looking to do, um, at some point. And I also quite honestly share Brett's concern that we're approving something, uh, that could be hanging out there for a very long time when all kinds of things could change between now and then. Uh, it's a little bit of a concern, but I, I actu, I, I think, you know, commend them for going forward with their project, uh, and think it's a, it's a nice addition to Friendswood, so I don't want to stand in the way of that, but that's just my editorial back, I share your concern.
This is the property rights discussion.
Yeah, and my concern. Brett, you look like you've got something to say.
No, just, just for clarification here, this, so the, it seems like we're all hung up on the height, and the height doesn't bother me, I mean, tall buildings go in downtown, so I think it's where you're gonna put something tall, goes in the downtown.
Not nearly this tall, Brett. But the tallest one we have, I think, is 65 feet, so this will be 25 feet taller.
This, the, the ornamental cross, so the, the tower is 72 feet, is that correct?
Yeah.
So two feet above what's allowed right now. 70 foot's the limit, so the tower's two feet higher than that, so we're really talking about just the cross going another 20 feet, it's not a 20-foot cross, or 18-foot high cross, correct?
19, too.
19, too.
Well done.
That, that just doesn't bother me, but ultimately it's gonna be council decisions anyway, so, so I'm okay with height.
I think we have a motion and a second.
I think that's, that's...
Did I get a second? I'm gonna remember.
Yes, no, at least a second.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to approve, um, the SUP, approve them, you guys are gonna have to say it better than I am. Before us, we have a motion to approve the SUP.
As, as prevented, as presented, with the exception of an overall height limit of 70 feet, complying with the, the local, the current code. Yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes as revised, 4 to 2. Okay. Our final action item is consideration and possible action regarding the partial preliminary plat of Avalon at Friendswood Section 1, a private subdivision being 68.101 acres of land containing 50 lots and 18 reserve in five blocks out of the Mary Fabro survey A69 along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll, I'll second. Go ahead. Got it. Aubrey, any, any information?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir. So this is, um, if you recall, we recently approved the planned unit development for the Avalon at Friendswood development. So this is Section 1 of that development. Uh, this section contains 50 residential lots. Part of the PUD requirement was that we wouldn't require any, or record any final plats until Friendswood Lakes Boulevard was installed and they had that for their access. Um, a few months ago, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard was kinda, they ran into some hiccups in the plan, and so that road, uh, project was pushed back a little bit, that's since been worked out. However, in order to not hold up this development, um, we talked with the developers and, um, agreed that they could build a portion of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard coming from the West Ranch side, um, and build their secondary entrance, um, to, uh, access these first few lots. Um, that's the reason why there's only 50 lots in there, because they're only gonna have one point of access, and so that's what Fire Marshal was comfortable with allowing. And so on the plat, um, one of the backup material items I put in there, so a lot of these reserves are gonna be replatted, um, in the future and to create additional lots. But, um, the plat is gonna go ahead and allow them to build the streets and put in the water and sewer to serve those future lots while their contractor is, um, is engaged on site. So I did a secondary, um, attachment that was yellow, it had yellow and green highlighting on it, so the green highlights will remain open space. Um, I included their open space calculations as well as an exhibit, and then the yellow highlights will be replatted in the future to create additional residential lots. Um, so during our review process, um, the preliminary plat requires one-line drainage and utility plans to be submitted, and, um, at this time, we were reviewing this Section 1 as kind of a standalone section, because if you recall, the lake is in the middle of this development and the lower half of the lake is in League City city limits. So the plan, long-term plan for the utilities is to take the water and sewer around the lake, which would require going into League City city limits. So you can't, or the current plan shows the water lines dead-ending, which our design criteria manual, um, doesn't allow lines to dead-end if they're longer than 500 feet. The system has to be looped to keep the water pressure fr, the water fresh and keep water moving, so it's just not at a dead-end line. Um, so at this time, their water plans, either, the plans for the water lines don't meet that requirement. Um, it's, uh, negotiations and talks with League City, um, I don't think have occurred at this point. The last information that we got was that League City was not interested in de-annexing this property to the City of Friendswood. We don't have any property to make, to exchange with them, to amend our city limits, um, and so there's some, there's a lot of, uh, decisions and discussions that need to be had between the two cities on how we're gonna, you know, who's gonna provide services to the portion outside the city limits. It seems long-range and it seems kind of out there, but we're bringing it up now because, like I said, those dead-end lines depend on whether or not that water line is gonna be looped around the lake. So water, sewer, um, detention and drainage, I don't think is gonna be that big of an issue, 'cause they have the lake, um, but the City of League City, like I said, the last information we received was that they, I mean, they obviously don't want to hold up this development either, they want things to move forward, so their suggestion was that they, the developer go ahead and install everything and that once League City had development coming up the backside of this, that they could transfer, like, transfer it all to League City in the future. Um, like I said, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out with that. In the meantime, City of Friendswood, if, you know, once it's built and if League City doesn't have any services available, the City of Friendswood would have to provide fire, EMS, police department, trash, water billing, all those, all that infrastructure that's put in place, um, you know, is ultimately, right now, planned to be from the City of Friendswood. So, but actually, but the property's in League City city limits. Um, at the, there's no points of access planned towards League City, all the access is from Friendswood Lakes Boulevard through Friendswood. The other factor is the school district, um, I don't think that's gonna change, even if, you know, there's some negotiations made between cities, uh, it's Clear Creek ISD, so those 30 lots that are in League City will most likely remain with Clear Creek ISD. Um, but, I say I bring all that up because, uh, it just, we don't know. Um, so it's concerns. Uh, so the compliance memo did call out a few, there's a labeling, which is not a huge deal, the design criteria manual calls out, um, that the dead-end lines can't exceed 500 feet, um, so, and then the easements, um, that are labeled, there are dry utility easements and water line easements overlapping, there are drainage easements overlapping, though, um, so the easements need to, water line has to be dedicated 10-foot, sewer line has to be dedicated 10-foot, the dry utilities are cable, electricity, and so those easements are maintained by those providers, and so we don't, we prefer not to have our water lines in with those easements, because, you know, there's a chance of damaging a water line when that work is being done. Um, this is gonna be a private gated community, so the streets are labeled as private ingress, egress, and public utility easements. The subdivision and the property owners, HOA, will be responsible for maintaining the streets, the paving, the drainage inlets, but the city, because they're tied into our public services, the city has to maintain the water and sewer lines, so it's a public utility easement. So the water and sewer typically, you try to fit within that 60 feet, but they're, the angles, the curves, you know, the lines can't make those curves sometimes, so they get outside that 60 feet. Um, so the easements need to be cleaned up, so that is an item on here. Again, these are conditions or reasons. Um, on the first page of the compliance memo, I included the new approval, standards for approval, the conditional approval and the disapproval with reasons, options, um, and so those are items to consider.
Okay, great, thank, thank you, Aubrey. Is the applicant here, like to make any comments?
Good evening, Catherine Parker with...
We have two microphones.
I know, which one? I'm just gonna, I'm Catherine Parker with Meta Planning, we prepared the plot, but I'll let, um, I've got Bobby Skinner here with Taylor Morrison, he can address some of the stuff in regards to, uh, League City, 'cause there's been some discussions that have happened recently, so.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time. Uh, again, my name is Bobby Skinner, I'm the Director of Development with Taylor Morrison of Texas, uh, taking the lead on, on Avalon at Friendswood. Monday, uh, a meeting took place between City of League City and LJA, our engineer on this project. There, it was a positive meeting, I believe we have some traction on a couple of different options to address these 37 lots. We're running some traps currently, um, and I, um, would hesitate to share any more information than that. Um, I, I, I don't want to put something out there that, that doesn't turn out to be true. Um, but there were, um, I think some of the folks at City of League City, um, we got their undivided attention, they actually looked at the situation and may have thought, huh, this makes sense for these lots to go into Friendswood. So that's the latest and greatest, uh, I'm sorry I didn't get that to you before this meeting. But, uh, we are extremely excited about this project, we're anxious to get going on it. Um, and I will answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, great. Hang on just a second, I bet.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that there will be.
Yes, sir.
Brett?
Are you up against a hard deadline? I mean, it seems like this, bringing this preliminary plat is a little preliminary, and you got, got a lot of things to iron out here, and a lot of, a lot of engineering questions that haven't been answered yet, uh, and now we got this new format, I, I mean, I certainly don't want to hold this development up, I was all for it and still strongly for it, uh, but, uh, probably gonna need some guidance here, uh, to conditionally approve it or, 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 I don't know, to be honest.
Tonight with comments, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it is, it, there's a lot to be, you said you all got a lot, a lot of stuff to iron out here. Which, are you at a hard deadline to get this preliminary plat approved tonight, or...
Um, if possible. Um, we're at the point in our schedule where we're starting to miss our, our committed delivery date.
Okay.
Um, we were looking at lot delivery December to January, uh, and our, our, you know, our development schedule, uh, as it lays out, we're, we're, actually, I believe we're already sliding.
Right.
Um, I, I will say there is confidence, um, among our management team in the Friendswood market, despite the various issues occurring in our world right now, not the least of which is oil, um, and, um, we're, we're still extremely confident, um, and for that reason, pushing forward to try and get those lots delivered.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Mark?
Uh, it's a procedural thing for me, I mean, we're in this no man's land, I supported the development as well and voted for you guys, uh, but I... I supported the development as well and voted for you guys, but I do feel a little apprehensive and a bit irresponsible if I don't understand approval with conditions. Where does that leave us? Are we all biting off more than we can chew with a 15-day turnaround or however this, I just, that's the piece that I just can't, I just can't put together right now.
So honestly, the conditional approval or the disapproval, disapproved with reasons are the exact same process. So they're gonna have to address these comments specifically and tell you how they address them and bring them back to the commission. So, I mean, we could have it back on the next agenda.
But some of the things that Brett, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's fine.
Okay. Some of the things that you mentioned, specifically the engineering and what I'm tuned into, was the, was the loop of the, of the water lines. I mean, that's, that might not be something we can solve in 15 days. So what, what happens at that point is, are we back to ground zero?
I think it puts the ball back in their court to figure out, I mean, we need answers, you know? If, and even if there's verbal commitments on the League City side, I mean, if we get some, you know, preliminary informa, you know, we just need some kind of information to move forward.
Okay.
Marcus, the 15 days is not on them. They can take as long as they need. It's on us once we get a clean proposal.
We commit when we have addressed the comments, and at that point, the 15 days.
The 15 days, we're on the clock.
Yes.
I forgot that. Thank you. Okay. All right. So we're not asking, so you mentioned, you know, the, was it design reference criteria?
Design criteria manual.
Yeah. So that's, we're not asking to, to waive that. You still have to solve that. You're just trying to solve it with two cities, which is four times the trouble, right?
It's, it's, I can't tell you how excited I was when my boss brought me a piece of land that had a 35-plus acre lake in it and, and two different cities that owned portions of it. Okay. It's obviously admitted, admittedly a challenging situation. I appreciate all the, all the effort that you guys have put in and, and your guidance and willingness to kind of steer us and what will work and what won't work. And we continue to try to meet that. I, I, I wish we could have gotten the meeting with League City a week or two earlier. Obviously, the, the virus business kind of threw everything into a, into a whirl. And all I can say is that they, we got raised eyebrows that, okay, it, these 37 lots doesn't necessarily make sense that League City tries to service those. How we achieve that, what the different options are, that's what I, I need to finish up some, some homework to, to report to.
Yeah, thanks for that context. So, yeah, so I'll, I'll support it conditionally. What I don't also see is, how do we as commissioners see the agreements that Friendswood and League City might work out? Do we trust you to tell us, hey, don't, we're gonna be okay here? Do we rely on your expertise, or is there something formal that is part of the package next time this comes?
So that's gonna be up to the developer and to the two city councils, basically. That's gonna either have to be agreements between the councils or...
That's outside of our P&amp;Z scope.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah. So we'll let you know.
One of the, one of the things that came out of the, the League City meeting was, was the, the evolution of thought that, okay, we, this is kind of what we think. Okay, League City, what do you think? And is this agreeable, workable? And, and, okay, we're gonna need to get the two cities to agree in principle on, on what we're doing, and then, and then we'll go do it.
Okay. Mr. Clark, I'll start. Any questions or comments?
As others have said, I supported the development and I still do. I, I mean, we can't approve it in its current condition, and it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of difference between the other, other two options, so I'll go with the majority on that. It doesn't matter to me, but I think those, those technical issues need to be resolved.
Mr. Sassen?
Yeah, I also, I'm excited about what you're doing here. I was, I had initial concerns about the lack of amenities. I see that you're adding a rec center. I'm very pleased about that. I think that's good. The competition around you has lots of amenities for people, and I thought that's a way we want to be here in Friendswood. And just having row after row of house was not where I wanted to see our community going, so I see at least you're moving a little bit that direction, and I do appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I noticed we talked about the length of Tanner Road. It was 1,034 feet till it got to the city line. If we go to, if there is an agreement, let's pretend that League City said, we're gonna just trade this land over, that road may exceed the 1,200 foot. That is our requirement between turns or block length. Is there, if the shape of this plat changes, do we get another look at it? I mean, if they say we're gonna put more land in it, so now the whole deal is kind of changed, do we get to vote on that? I mean, right now, we're looking at, I think we're looking at the conditions that you've kind of listed in terms of utilities and easements and getting all that straightened out, and that all makes sense, and I'm completely supportive of that. But if this road thing goes on and we say, hey, now we're in the category of we're exceeding what the requirement, what the recommendation is in the codes, do we get another chance at this?
Yeah, so the section of the plat that's gonna exceed that requirement would be when we consider that.
Okay.
So.
So I don't need to worry about that at this time.
Not at this, yes.
Good, good. And the water looping and the utilities and all that is covered in your notes already. There was one other thing that I have since forgotten since I started talking, so I'm gonna let Lisa talk for a while and maybe it'll come back.
Commissioner Lundquist?
So the showstopper for me is the, the water loop. If, if regulations say you can't cap because of freshwater, and to me, that, that's a no-go. So that's the one thing for me that has to be fixed. As far as, so where I live in Friendswood, in Friendswood city limits, I paid Pearland water and sewer for about eight years before it switched over. So I know that those agreements can be done. So that's not a showstopper, but that agreement has to, to come into place. And, and I hope that, you know, you can work something out for the betterment. And where I live, kids on one side of the street go to Pearland schools and the other side of the street go to Friendswood. So, I mean, all of that can be worked out, but the water is the showstopper for me. I, I think that needs to meet all applicable codes.
I, if I may respond.
Yeah.
I completely understand the engineering behind a looped system and agree with that. I personally am gonna pull out every stop I can to make these lots a part of Friendswood in every sense of the word. I'm just not there yet. But rest assured, that, that's the end goal. We, we are prepared to handle the marketing challenge if we are paying an out-of-city rate, and obviously that's increased and, you know, we'll, we'll have to make sure that's clear to homeowners, et cetera. But that's a distant Plan B. Plan, Plan A is, is to get those lots in the city. It makes sense. Audrey mentioned a potential land swap. We're doing some homework.
Okay. Thank you. I had just, I'm sorry, anything else?
So, so I have always been a big fan of, of your plan, of your project. I, I think it's lovely. I think you have a lovely opportunity with that land space, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what you're doing with it. And, and in my real life, I also do project management. I understand competing stakeholders and give and take and all that, so I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
I think everything can be worked out with negotiations, so, except for that water loop. That was not, so.
Understood.
That's only, that's my only really sticking point.
Thank you.
So help me, thank, thank, so, let me, help me understand. I just want to make sure where you stand on this. So it's, the city has brought up the issues about the easements and splitting the easements by utility. I'm not trying to put you on the spot and you can defer this question, but is that a, is that a significant problem to you? It's a problem, doesn't meet the requirements, but is that a big deal, little deal, or you haven't figured it out yet?
I, I've, I've got my engineer here if we want to get specifics, but I...
I'm looking at the big picture, to be honest.
It's, my understanding, that's not an issue.
Okay. I just wanted to understand.
That'll be, that'll be corrected.
You got, if you could help me by standing up here if you're gonna speak, I'm sorry.
We've gotten clarification on everything, so it's just, I mean, that issue and then the label issue, we're not concerned with addressing.
Okay.
And as far as the loop goes, that is the intent. It's just, so this is Section 1, it's not gonna be, the loop is not gonna be part of this section. But ultimately, that's the plan going forward. So it's just finalizing those.
Okay, well, while you're standing up there, for both of you, then, just not note who, so, I understand the difference between a dead-end line and a looped line. With the way it's configured now, I'm assuming we're having this discussion because you're beyond the 500 feet of a, what I would call a radial line, a dead-end line. Is that, is that the case? Are you beyond that 500 feet? So...
Almost assuredly, just on the size of the lake.
I just, and so to correct that, you've got to go ahead and put the, the loop in before you can go forward with this particular phase? Or address it some other way?
It, the, the loop would be connected in a future phase. It's, it's, it's a challenging thing to wrap your head around. You, you, you've got the lake, and we're, we're doing a section up here.
Right.
And we bring the lines down here. When we develop the, the lots down below, we'll connect it.
Sure.
So, so you will, for a period of time, have a dead-end line, but that's not the ultimate design.
Okay. So, so hang on one second, then. So, I mean, I understand with best, the best intentions and the best plans, that's what you're trying to work towards, and it's not easy, and you're working to get there. But for, if it's a requirement in our design criteria manual that we can't go, how do we solve that?
So that's where we need, we need a definite agreement in what's gonna take place with League City. I think there may be, and I'm not the Public Works Department, but I think there may be some temporary measures that we can put in place as far as flushing, you know, the ends of the lines, fire hydrants on the ends of the lines to temporarily address any dead-end issues. As long as we know that in the future, that line is gonna be looped, I don't know what that timeframe would be, but at this point, it's just dead ends with no future plans.
But, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, so if, if we get that determination from League City that, no, you know, this, we're not gonna give this property up, this is never coming to Friendswood, we need to redesign those plans now.
Yep. So Aubrey, if I can just jump in, the, the impediment to making this work is not the cost of pre-investing in the loop, it is the issue of crossing the, the city line. Okay, and so that needs to be resolved before this can be resolved. I understand now. Thanks. I, I thought it was, hey, we don't want to spend all that money for that whole League Loop because we're not gonna use it, but that's not the impediment. The impediment here is the logistics of the city limit. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, no, no, I think, I think I understand now. I just wanted to make sure I had it in my head correctly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, so Aubrey, now, this is new territory for all of us trying to go through this. So what we have are three concerns, two, one of which seems just an easy, an easier fix, amend drawings, but then two that, that are harder to fix, or that will, that will have to be fixed at some future date. So my question, your statement earlier was that this makes no difference whether we deny, and here are the reasons, or here's approval with these conditions. I keep thinking there ought to be one nuance that makes it, go one versus the other better in this, in this situation.
I think it's probably the optics of whether or not this is trash and I'm not gonna take it in any way, shape, or form, or it's a really good plan with these few things that need to be. So I, I think it's optics more than anything.
But they're critical.
So I don't think, I don't think we can approve it because under the approval standards, number two says it conforms to the general plans for the extension of roads, streets, and public highways, taking into account access to and extension of sewer and water mains and the instrumentalities of public utilities. So I don't think we can approve it. So we're either conditionally approving or disapproving. It's, like I said...
With the, with the same reasons.
Yeah, either way, that's coming back to you all for reconsideration once they get those things ironed out.
Yeah, that was the reason for my process question. If they met our conditions, what's the debate when they come back?
They have to show how they met those conditions.
But they're gonna do that before you even allow it on the agenda, right?
Hopefully.
Yeah, so I don't...
Yeah, but Aubrey doesn't have the right to decide if that really meets the conditions as such.
Okay.
If they say it meets the conditions, they say we want a P&amp;Z meeting to talk about that, and then we have to decide if it really does or not.
Yep.
So I, so I appreciate what's going on here, yeah.
Thank you.
And I understand what you're saying too, Lisa, about optics. It's probably the only difference. Yeah.
So I just want to make sure I'm completely clear on this. If we conditionally approve, I mean, having a closed-loop system, that's a major variance from our design criteria manual. I mean, that's a biggie. And Friendswood has some of the best water quality we have, and not having those lines flushed, that's, that's a big deal. So my concern is, eventually they could tie in when they do the other face, but what happens to the other face never happens. I mean, the condition we're in right now.
But, but what I've gotten comfortable with is that they can't go forward, that they can't meet the requirements of the, in the design criteria manual until they loop it, or shorten the, the line, the dead-end lines to meet it, one way or the other. So it's not, right?
So a vote of no and denying us gives us no additional protection. It's the same as voting with conditions. Is that right?
Say that again.
Mitigating risk by saying no does not buy the City of Friendswood anything. Approval with conditions is the same thing as saying no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah. Yes.
The only items we can talk about during the next time are the things that we didn't, that we brought up this time. And so everything else is approved by de facto either way.
Right. Just the deficiencies that are noted.
Right.
Yes.
One way or the other.
And these are big deficiencies. So, as one assurance is that, I mean, I guess the city wants the final plat, they can't, it has to, yeah.
They still have a, I mean, they still have some processes to go through. I mean, they, they're gonna have to submit construction plans, you know, and final plat, but like I said, conceptually, we need to know what the plan is at this point.
They can't sell lots until it's fixed one, some way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they, yeah, they have to fix this before construction plans submittal.
Right. Okay, I feel better now. And, and what I'm sensing in here is that they need to get a solution with League City to actually solve the looping problem. So that's going to, we don't need to address that, but that's going to be hidden in the, in the underlying solution potentially, likely.
Deficiency that needs to be corrected.
Yes.
Addressed.
Okay. For no pluses or minuses, I mean, I'm really like 51% on this, but I, I'm more inclined just to, just to say it's denied. Since these are such major deficiencies that have to be addressed, I'm more inclined to say it's denied based on the, in the, the three reasons that we provided. And one's easy to do and two are a little bit harder. One's, sounds like doable, one's easy, one's doable, and one's, it's gonna take the work with League City to resolve.
One thing I did not explain earlier, which, so our local rules of procedure require that if an item is denied, it's not brought back to the commission within 90 days. State law trumps our decision. We will not enforce that 90-day rule. So I, I know historically, we said if we deny something, it can't come back for 90 days. That is not, we can't enforce that because the state says if you deny or conditionally approve, you cannot put a timeframe on their resubmittal. So we'll have to amend our rules of procedure in the future, but just...
Is that in the ordinance? Do we have to change that? Or is that just a procedure we do?
It's, it's a resolution.
So it's a resolution? So we're gonna have to correct that as part of the ordinance subcommittee? That's all I'm thinking about? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But like I say, it shouldn't have any bearing on the decision. I just didn't want somebody to think of that later.
Is there any reason we could get caught in a trap somewhere by the two conflicting? I'm just concerned that maybe we should, then, maybe I should change my inclination to the other way, approve with conditions.
I, I haven't been able to, I haven't found any difference in the two...
The process is the same.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not gonna get, we can't run afoul of our Friendswood ordinance. Okay. So we're not gonna get, we can't run afoul of, of our Friendswood ordinance at all. We know, we know absolutely it trumps.
Yes.
Okay.
It's like Lisa says, it's optics, right?
Well, I, I am leaning more toward the other way.
Okay.
For, toward approval with conditions. And the reason for that is those conditions tell them the boundaries of exactly what they're looking for to get back into good favor, right? Whereas a denial does, to me, doesn't give you quite, it, it's a denial. You come back and you start all over again, right?
You owe them the explanation.
No, they only...
You only have to meet what you didn't like.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, there really is no difference.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
It, it's just optics.
My, my only concern, the reason I've kind of leaned, maybe I should have explained that. The only reason I leaned one way only by, you know, hair, is that once the deal is worked out with League City, there's just all these unknowns we don't know. And I'm just, I want to make sure I reserve the ability to look at all the things we don't know and that, all the things that are gonna come up in this next phase of this.
As opposed to the unknowns we do know, right?
Yeah, that, yeah. Well said. Fair enough. Okay. Well, sorry for the sausage making up here, by the way. This is, this is all new to us. This'll be the first time.
I'm thinking if we approve with condition, that gives them leverage with League City, maybe saying, look.
That's fair. That's fair.
We got it.
Okay, that's fair. I, I'm, I'm swayed by you two, your eloquence.
So do we need to change the amendment, the motion?
The motion, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I would track the language that's listed in the memo to have, if you do the conditional motion for conditional approval with the following conditions as established in the memo dated April 22nd or whatever.
Yeah, say that.
Did you make the original motion? Okay.
Do you withdraw it?
Yeah. I need to draw mine.
Are you gonna...
Or amend it.
Or amend it. Amend it.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to approve, to, to approve with conditional, to approval with conditions as stated in the staff report. Becky, no?
Just because this is a, a new law, I would just say conditional approval with the, with the following conditions as, you know, I would say conditional approval with. That's how I would say it.
Say that one more time.
He wants to work in.
The underline part.
Do I have to list the, the condition, the following conditions or we just say, leave it at that?
Do we need to list them?
Do I need to go through all these?
No, I don't think so. Just say motion for conditional approval with the following conditions as established or in the, whatever this is called, the memo.
Second memo.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I amend my motion from approval to conditional approval with the following conditions as stated in the memo dated April 22nd.
April 22nd, yes.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and, yeah, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay. Somewhere, I even marked where we were. Okay. Our next agenda item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, May 14th, and our second meeting in May will be Thursday, May 28th.
Right.
And you expect to have meetings then, best you know?
I, I believe so. We've got several, we had three submittals last week, or Monday, so.
Wow.
We've got projects moving.
Okay. Okay. Communications is, is next. Commissioner updates. Do any commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate? Suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments? Mr. Clark? I'm sorry. Brett?
Nothing. No, nothing.
Lisa?
I have nothing.
Mark? I have no liaison assignment updates, but thank you for backing me up those times.
Oh.
And I did want to bring something up that I recall that came up from a city council member. And, and maybe you guys can help with metrics for the next time this comes up. And we don't have to solve it now. This is just something that I was considering. How many gated communities or communities who manage their own streets through their HOA have then later decided they don't want that and they attempt or successfully put that back on the city? So I know that was a city council member concern. I had no metrics or data for that. Anything you guys might have would be helpful too. But I know that that specifically is a concern, especially if we start talking about the engineering that they might do, how that then would impact if that's a more costly approach for our utilities to, to maintain those things once it is handed over. So it's just a hand grenade I'm throwing out there. And then we can just get smarter on that. That would help me. No timeframe on that concern.
Okay. I, I had nothing else, other than a general comment of thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Really appreciate it. And again, thanks for all the help in setting up this meeting. I think it was very productive to be here in person.
I agree.
It's kind of sterile over the phone. Okay, we move on to council liaison update. Ms. Hanks?
Hi, guys, and Lisa, thank you for showing up tonight for the meeting and allowing me to listen in this way. The city, as you know, has been, had a, been under a stay-put order or a stay-home order. And I know that our first responders, our police, firemen, the EOC, everyone's been very thankful that the people in this city have adhered to that. So it's keeping everybody safe. Our instances are, our residents infected with the COVID virus are one of the lower ones in the Galveston County, one of the lower cities, and it seems to be kind of staying put for the last several days. So the governor will be having a conference on Monday and will announce whether this order is lifted or if he's going to extend it for a few more weeks or who knows how long. I know that there are plans at the county level, it's being discussed, and at the state level about relaxing some and getting people back to work. We're just in historic times and we're watching very closely. Mo and his staff, they're doing an excellent job of just trying to cut where they can. Our revenues haven't been impacted at this point, but just to, you know, not go on any travel that's not absolutely necessary and just cut, you know, if they don't have to spend their whole budget, don't do it. If there are some things they can do without, just to be a little more conservative. We know that a lot of people out there are hurting. Also, the city and the Rotary and the Friendswood Little League have gotten together and they're partnering on providing meals to some of our seniors and some others that are having difficulty getting out and also a way to support our small restaurants and businesses in town. So other than that, you know, most of the committee meetings, except for you guys, have been canceled. And I look forward to the day that we can all get back to normal, but I appreciate all of you and hope that you all stay healthy, wash your hands, keep your distance, and stay well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Trish. Next, our staff updates. Aubrey?
The March DRC report was in your back-up material. We are not having in-person DRC reports at this time. City Hall's obviously closed to the public, so, but we're still, if we get inquiries, we're routing, we're getting information from the developers and routing it to staff and still putting together the same DR, DRC notes that we would if we were meeting in person. And we're emailing those notes to those developers and citizens and going over with them, over the phone with them and, so that they still are getting their information. Like I said, we've still got some projects that are going through. You know, permitting's still happening. We have a drop box outside the door, so people are able to drop off plans, pay online and things like that. So it's been business as usual for us and hopefully that'll keep our economy going locally, allowing these projects to go through.
Good. Becky, anything? Mary Kay, anything? Thank you so much for your help tonight. We really needed you here. Thank you. Okay. With that, if there's no other business, the April 23rd, 2020 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.